I'd like to call this Village Board meeting to order. This is number 3,091. It's February 23rd, 2015. Clerk, would you please call attendance?
Abernathy, present.
Kim, here.
Meyer, here. Semple, here.
Sullivan, here.
Voss, here.
Okay. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. First item on the agenda for tonight would be the approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the Board of Trustees' regular meeting minutes from February 9th, 2015.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim. Discussion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Trustee Meyer.
In the minutes on packet page 17, there is a motion to approve the payment of bills. And I think it is inaccurate that that motion failed. I think it should be carried. And so I think that may have been an inadvertent typo.
We got that? Okay. Very good. Thank you.
So that needs to be corrected.
Yep.
Seven minutes will be approved with that correction.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy, yes. Kim, yes. Meyer, yes. Semple, yes. Sullivan, yes. Voss.
Abstained.
Motion carries. Okay. This takes us to the time in the evening for public commentary. Is anyone present that wishes to address the board at this time? If so, could you please raise your hand so we can see who we have here? Okay. No one wishing to address the board at this time? Very good. We'll close the floor. There's no presentation awards, no public hearings this evening. That takes us to my report. Couple things, and then we have an action. First, there will be a coffee with the mayor on Saturday, the 7th. It's the first Saturday of the month, so that's the 7th, 9 o'clock at Omega in the side room there. And that's just whoever wants to come and have coffee with me. And we'll just, you know, talk about village items for a good hour or two or so, depending on who shows up and how many. Next, the next day, on the 8th, March 8th is Sunday, Mayor's Cup Math Challenge. We have raised at least as much money, if not more than last year. Last year, we had $4,000, and there's every indication we're going to get more than that coming in. And that goes to three different divisions. Varsity is grades 11 and 12. Junior varsity is grades 9 and 10. And then we have a middle school division as well. This is a math contest, an individual contest, and then a team contest. And cash prizes go to the individual winners. And then traveling trophies go to the winning schools for those three divisions. And so it's, we're getting great response from the businesses in terms of donations. And it's a great way to encourage middle schoolers and high schoolers to pursue the science, tech, engineering, and math vocations.
And that-
They're gifted in those.
12 to 4?
12. It's going to be 12. Noon is registration. And we'll be done around 4 o'clock or so. That's correct. And that's on Sunday, the 8th. That'll be at Mundaline High School. Now, if you know of a student that wants to participate, they need to register through their math teacher at their school. We've done all the registration through the schools, through the math teachers themselves. And they're assembling teams, because there's a team aspect to it, as well as individual. Okay? So it'd be best if they just go to their math teacher for information. And we've been emailing and communicating clearly with them. Okay. That takes us to action from tonight's previous public hearing. And there was a recommendation. What I need is, I'll just read this. "We need a motion to accept the recommendation from the public hearing to remove Ray Lattawig from the Planning and Zoning Commission." Do I have that motion?
I move, make the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Voss. Discussion? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
No.
Abernathy? Yes. Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
And if I had to vote, I would vote yes. The motion does carry. That takes it, that's the completion of my report. That takes us to trustee reports. But we're going to back off and have the liquor commission meeting. So we need now, we're going to go to the liquor commission meeting at this time. So we need a motion to recess into the liquor commission meeting.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Motion by Sullivan.
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Okay. Let's dial up the Liquor Control Commission's agenda. I'd like to call that meeting, the meeting to order for the Liquor Control Commission, February 23rd. And clerk, please take attendance.
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Okay. Motion carries. This takes us to the time in the Liquor Control Commission meeting for public commentary. Does anyone present wish to address the Liquor Control Commission at this time? Okay. Then we'll close the floor and move on to approval of minutes from January 12th. I need a motion to approve the Liquor Control Commission minutes from January 12th, 2015.
So moved.
Motion by Kim. Second by Abernathy. Discussion? Clerk, please call the roll.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Present.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries. There are two items for us this evening. And we'll go to the first one. And if the proprietor is here, are you here? Okay. Mr. Bosaaki, would you, Mr. and Mrs. Bosaaki, would you like to come up and address us and just kind of tell us what you're thinking about doing there?
Good evening, Board. My name is Greg Bosaaki, more like Richard. We were really asked here, because I don't know-
Yeah, let's get your mic on. There we go. Perfect.
Am I good here now?
There you go.
I don't want to talk into these things. Actually, I was asked to come tonight because I didn't really know how your procedures are and whatever. But I was asked here to come for purposes of if there was questions or those kind of things. But what we're trying to do is, we're trying to start a small, like, micro brewery here in Mundaline. Because we used to live here years ago, and we actually recognized the amount of traffic that actually does flow through Mundaline. And we think that it would be a good area to kind of go for our business. And we're, we actually like the location on Holly, because it's off the main drag and this kind of a thing. And the intention of our micro brewery is to, it's to be basically very small. The emphasis is not strictly on have people come here to taste out these beers. But the emphasis is to make beer for people to actually take home, to have in their, to consume in their own houses. Okay? So it's sort of like pizza to go while we're having kind of beer to go. And I recognize the fact that there's already a micro brewery in town, which is substantially larger than we intend to. But then the market is going to be entirely different. We're having, it's going to be a small batches, a small batches of beer. We'll do about 300 barrels a year in the first year, I am anticipating. And again, we have a small tavern area in the front, as the way our original proposed layout is. And it's going to make maybe seating for 24, 25 people. Because the intention is not to be there to drink, but to actually taste. If you, and again, if the customer feels it's a, it's the proper beer that they want to take home, we would have to fill growlers, mini kegs, this kind of a thing, for people to then to take home. And that's the reason for the name of Bosaaki's Homebrew, Take Home Fresh Beer.
Okay. Yeah. Trustee Abernathy.
I just, I read this, and I think it's great. However, I am not a beer drinker. Even though I still go to Tight Head. So I will ask that you have pop. So if people are coming in, that you might have a can of Coke for them to drink.
Um-
Really?
That may be a conflict in the way the actual reg, the regulations are. When I start to dealing with the federal and the state regulations and stuff, there is a certain regulations I have to adhere to. But we've been gotten that request a few times already.
Because Tight Head has pop.
If it isn't a problem, I will do something.
I don't, like I said, I'm not a beer drinker. I go to Tight Head, and I get a Diet Coke.
There you go.
So I'm happy with that. So I think it's great. I'm really excited about it. I would love to see another micro brew come in.
Great.
So.
Trustee Semple.
Yeah, quick question for you. So your establishment is going to be one where I would come in and basically taste the beer. And then the concept is more for takeout versus a bar type where I come in and watch TV and drink a bunch of beers?
Correct. And that's kind of our different approach to the whole micro brewery. If you're, many micro breweries, what they do offer is they offer a set of flights. You usually get four ounces of beer to taste the different types. And again, it's, our situation is that if they like those types of beer, we encourage them to buy growlers. Other types of containers, as regulated, for them to actually take home. So it's not a place that it's going to be a long, we don't really intend people to be there a long term necessarily. We don't, I mean, the initial intention is not having no sports night. We'll be watching football all evening. The idea is, is on Monday night footballs, perhaps you come in there, fill your growler up, and go home and enjoy the game.
No, I think it's a great idea.
It's a little different.
Really look forward to having you in town.
A little different.
Yep. Anyone else? Yes, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's called homebrew, and you just explained it's because you take it home. But do you offer the opportunity to buy anything for people who do homebrew, as in like a supply type of way?
We expect that there will be some small retail part of this as well. Because when, you know, I've been a homebrew for many, many years, and I know the enjoyment of it. And many people, some stick with it and go on. But I would never discourage anybody from actually doing this in their, in their own home. It's right, you're entitled to 100 gallons individually, 200 gallons a year of brewing your own beer. So I would encourage that. I was actually thinking of partnering with a local supplier that deals with homebrew as well. To, for them to also encourage the business to do home brewing as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
So-
Yes.
So will you have a big refrigeration in back to keep, to keep the beer cold?
Yeah. Without going into the total details, yes. We will have a walk-in cooler there available. And the anticipation is there will be four regular beers that we will have on tap. And two to four specialty beers, seasonal type of beers that we have available. But there will be, it's going to be a large walk-in cooler on site for that.
Okay. So I'll rephrase this, sort of. So the customers aren't walking into the cooler and helping themselves?
No, no.
You, it's back behind you, and they'll bring you a growler that they want refilled, whatever, and you'll go back and refill it?
Correct. Actually, it'll, it'll all incur in the little tavern area.
Okay.
Where you'll actually walk up, and we'll actually have actually what we call a growler express station. Somebody can walk in with their previously purchased growler, walk up to our bar, and actually have it filled right there.
Okay.
We'll have it, I provided some layout of the, of the way the brewery and the bar is going to be. They'll actually be able to see the tanks and some of the equipment that we use for this. Obviously, it's a nice visual effect. But no, everything, they will not be entering the brewery unless they're with some, one of the owners of the business.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Can I just, I'm sorry, then. I kind of totally, when I saw there was a bar area, I just thought that, I didn't realize you were more of a takeout. So you don't need to have pop.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I just thought it was more of a, come on in and have a drink and watch a show, you know, watch the game or something. But if it's not-
There's a lot of, lot of questions along those lines in the early stages of this. But there are certain things that I can and cannot do at this stage.
Okay.
And certain licensing, so.
Okay. So I felt bad then saying-
No problem.
Have some Diet Coke. But, okay.
Just, one example I use is, when you go taste wine, you taste wine and then you take the bottle home. That's kind of what the same concept. You're coming in to taste the different beers, and then you're taking that home with you. That's kind of the same concept. So.
Yep. Anyone else? Okay. We just need to get a consensus. Isn't that right? At this point? To, for them to pursue a liquor license?
Yeah. I'm good.
Everyone good?
Yeah. Welcome to Mundaline. We hope you grow and need a new space soon that we can provide for you in Mundaline.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Looking forward to it. We have an envelope here that gives you directions, right? In the, what they, to pursue the liquor license that you'll need to open up. There you go.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next up, Quick Pick. It's 631 and 635 North Midlothian Road.
Hello, Mr. Mayor and everybody else, all the trustees. How are you doing this evening?
Good.
I'm Sanjay Jethwa from Quick Pick. We've been open now for six months, doing like a convenience store. And we trying again for the liquor license, so we can open up our next unit, the liquor store. And before we go on, I want to refresh the indoor farmer's market, Dakota's Indoor Farmer's Market, is only for the winter time. So I think they schedule until March 1st. Yeah. That was, because we have the, we have open space, and we figure we can help out the community. We're doing a lot of stuff to help our community here. As you can see, you have this, I submitted an interest later, and you have all. So the main point is, I know we have some issue last time when we tried for the liquor license. So this time, we using a different approach, and it's going to be under my name only, the liquor license. And Mr. G2 probably not be working many hours once I have the liquor approved. Right now, he's working, the reason, because I can afford him instead of other employee, because I can skip a payment here and there. Because business is still not there, you know, where we want it. Because without liquor, it's a little bit hard to go on. And the other thing is, our main customer, 99% or adult, we haven't got any kids from the Mundaline High School. Knock on the wood. You know, nobody tried to come buy the tobacco. We had like three audit, I believe, in past six months. And we failed, I mean, we passed all three of them. We had no violation. And we hoping to go on without violation many years to come. I have few copies of some pictures that going to give you a little bit idea how this store going to look once it's completed. I don't have too many copies, but. Can you maybe share? So once, yeah, once, once we get the build-out done, this going to be, you can look like a complete, happy liquor store. So this is going to look like when we complete, once we get approval, when the build-out is done, pretty much going to look like a complete liquor store. We not going to have too many other items that we have right now. The reason we have those items, just to keep the customer coming, get to know the place. And we have got a lot of positive comments from the people, you know, like the store is clean, nice, friendly environment. And we hoping to get the liquor approval, so we can do better and help out more local community also.
Okay. Any trustee wish to ask questions? Yes, trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In this photo you provided, there's a wooden floor here and linoleum here.
No, this is just, I'm looking at some examples, what my store going to look like. So this is not exactly going to be like this, but because we have the tile, it's not going to be the wood floor, so we're going to keep the tile. And maybe if we do good in the future, we'll revamp the whole unit, all three unit, and make a, you know, new inside and outside.
Okay.
Question.
Yes.
Is this business, in addition to the existing Pickwick, so you're going to have employees running the Pickwick? And barrier wall, is another set of employees running the liquor store?
No. This business is going to be strictly one unit. We're going to break the wall open. It's going to be one, one register. So right now, when you see Quick Pick, there's a lot of items in there, they're not going to be there. They all going to be converted to the beer, wine. It's going to be strictly a packaged liquor store.
So it's, Pickwick is going to expand to sell liquor?
Yes. It's the next unit.
And this will be called Pickwick?
It's going to be Quick Pick Liquor.
It's, there's not going to be anything other than liquor? Is it?
So it's just going to be a liquor store?
Yes, correct. Like a packaged liquor store. So when you walk in, you're going to find the beer, wine, maybe some chips and the tobacco mainly.
So just so we're clear, the store you have now-
Right.
Does not have liquor. Are you going to change all that to liquor?
Yes.
Along with the place next door?
Yes.
So both will now be primarily liquor?
They're going to be strictly liquor, right? Yeah.
So the goods you have there now will be gone?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. So we're clear.
Yeah. Just to mainly, that's our main point, just to have a packaged liquor.
Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Jethwa?
Yes, Jethwa.
Thank you. You are only having, going only have one entry and exit. 631 will not-
No. It won't, yeah.
Someone will enter?
It will be locked permanently.
Only here. And where on this is your checkout counter? Could you tell me?
The checkout is right by 631, I mean, 635.
In front of the door.
In front of there, right. Well, as soon as you walk in, to the right.
And is, is there a way of viewing this portion of your store? Or is there a wall here?
That wall going to be knocked down. So right now, we have a wall.
Going to knock that wall down?
We're going to knock the wall down, open up the whole floor.
Be a clear span. You can see everything. You'll have beers up, so you can see down the aisles.
Yep. You can see, and we have about 16 cameras in there, and we monitoring everything.
You remember our concern when we spoke to you previously, that you had items that people could buy at any age, as long as they could pay for them. But they couldn't buy alcohol. And so the concern was that, well, you had these people, these underage people coming in, especially from the high school being close by.
Right.
But now, you're going to have some chips, some condiments, no groceries, no, you're going to have pop.
Yeah. Pop and juice, you know.
And there will be good sightlines, as well as the devices to see down the aisles.
Uh huh.
All right. How many clerks do you have in the store? One clerk at, at a time?
At a time, yes. One. Once we get legalized, then we might have to add more. Because one person cannot handle, you know, stocking and everything, because it's going to be bigger store now.
Well, I, I'm somewhat relieved to the fact that the product line is going to be far less conducive to people underage coming in the store. And it will be the majority of just liquor sales. And the sightlines to all these product shelves are going to be available from your checkout area. Okay? Thank you.
Hold on. Can I ask a?
Yeah.
Is this how you're planning on doing it?
That was the plan we did previously when we had the meeting. But the picture I gave you, that's going to be the future plan.
Okay. Because this is what's our plan right now, from what you submitted. And this has aisle for groceries, aisle for groceries, aisle for groceries. So this has all four grocery aisles?
No. It's not going to be.
No. It's not going to be groceries, right. This was the plan that we already made previously. It was presented last time.
Okay.
So there's going to be no grocery, only if, like, when you walk in the packaged liquor store, it's going to be basically just the liquor store.
Okay. Well, then, I don't know why we got this, ma'am. I just don't know why we got this, then. Mr. Mayor?
Yes. Trustee Voss.
Thank you. Can you tell me what program you're going to use to make sure that people are of age?
We always check the ID. And we have a, the system, the computer, that when you scan the product, tobacco, like, right now, we only scan tobacco. It's prompt for the scan the driver's license. So it's going to ask you, before, you know, you can pay, it's going to ask whoever is behind the counter, it's going to ask them, scan the ID.
Okay. So anytime that someone wants to buy either tobacco or alcohol, you have to scan their ID and the computer, and your register system-
Yeah. Then they can do the transaction.
Will say of age or not.
Right. Yeah. Once you scan the driver's license, any, doesn't matter, doesn't have to be Illinois or out-of-state license, they can scan it, and it's going to verify the age. It's going to say yes or no underage.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Should we go through and get a consensus here? Let's start over here. Trustee Meyer?
Yeah, I'm fine with the-
You okay with this? Okay? Trustee Abernathy? Trustee Semple?
I wish it was a Benny's, but I'll, since it's a full liquor store, I'll go along with this, since it's not just considered a mini martyr gas station.
Okay. Trustee Voss?
Um, yeah. I think that I'll go along with it. It's not, there's something about it that, I don't know, it just isn't sitting quite right. But it's not enough that, that I will say no. But I will tell you this, and believe it from the bottom of our bones here. You better make sure that you are scanning every license, because I guarantee you, if you have a violation quickly, this board will come down on you with wrath.
Yes. I know. I've been working very hard on this, so I know how this goes.
I vote yes.
Yes. I'm in favor of the application for our liquor license.
Okay. I would concur with trustee Voss. You know my feelings on this. We've had conversations. I'm very concerned about the location near the high school. I know high schoolers parked there, in that parking lot. And I know that the path, the traffic of underage drinkers coming by, underage kids, being tempted to go in and give it a shot. You know, to see if you'll sell. And they talk amongst themselves, they know the places in town that sell to underage. Okay?
Right.
And you know my thoughts, and I would concur with trustee Voss's opinion. Please be extremely diligent.
Yes, sir.
Okay?
Yep.
All right.
You got to make sure we scan it, get the ID.
And here's your directions. And wish you well, and wish you, much luck to your business. Okay. That takes us to the end of the items. Okay, that takes us to the end of the items. Do we have a motion to adjourn the liquor control commission?
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, and so, we are adjourned. Let's now, okay? Next will be a motion to reconvene. All right? So let's get rid of this one. Let's come back to this one. Okay. At this point, we need a motion to reconvene the village board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, we are now reconvened. Clerk, would you please take attendance?
Abernathy?
Present.
Kim?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
Semple?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Voss?
Here.
Very good, we are reconvened. Attendance has been taken. We are now at the trustee reports. Item nine on the packet, that takes us to the public works committee. Trustee Meyer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There aren't any motions or anything on the agenda for public works. Mr. Boucher, how are we faring with the cold weather? I know we've had some water pipe issues.
Yes, we've had a few main breaks over the past two weeks, and they're being handled pretty well. We've managed to pull in some of the reserve staff to assist in some of the breaks, when we've had multiple breaks during the same time. We recently had one occur in an unincorporated area near town, which was thought to be our main, but it is actually the, the Oak Street Homeowners Association that owns and operates and maintains that system. So we worked with Lake County to have them provide assistance to that group. So other than that, we are managing our main relatively well, given the amount of breaks we've had.
Sorry, could you just, how many breaks are we talking?
In the last week alone, we've had six. But beyond that, I couldn't give you the, the accurate number.
Anything else we need to know related to the cold, or related to public works at all?
No, the only thing I would recommend is, we did get some inquiries from the community about when we were to shut water off to specific homes, when we had to repair that section of the main. They were concerned with their water, or their lines in their home freezing, which is, is not really something they need to worry about. As long as they have heat in their homes, the lines in their, their home itself won't freeze because we've turned off the water or anything like that. So we, we tried to kind of quell those fears, and just to get that message out there, that that's not going to occur, even if we shut the water off for a specific period of time.
Good to know, I've wondered that myself. All right, thank you. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next up, finance committee. Trustee Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This evening, we have a number of motions, on the first being a motion to adopt a resolution identifying eligible developmental project costs with respect to the downtown Tiff district, and further identifying those redevelopment project costs for which third parties have agreed to reimburse the village. And I will make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Another motion is also in regard to our tax increment financing district. It is a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing release of 2012 Tiff fund reserves, establishment of 2013 Tiff fund reserves, acknowledge Tiff fund requests from the grade school, high school, and library districts prior to September 30th, 2014, and reimbursement of funds from Tiff fund for payment of eligible costs. And I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Meyer? Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries?
You've had before you a nine-month staff financial report. It deals with budget and amount expended, comparable amounts from last year. We need to, according to law, present this and accept it. And so I'll make the motion to accept the nine-month financial report.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Meyer. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Final motion to pay AT&amp;T. We will have an abstention from this, so it's been removed from our bill list. It's a motion to approve the payment of bills to AT&amp;T. Total invoices equal $2,268.35. So I'll make that motion.
Motion by Sullivan?
Second.
Second by Voss. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Abstain.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries?
This evening, on our omnibus list of motions, we have a motion to pay our bills. They total $557,979.56. Couple of the major numbers, an amount to our consultant regarding highway engineering, roadway engineering, from G. Walt Hamilton. There are seven bills, they total $81,437.13. We are going to pay the Ting Company, the builders of the first Cardinal Square building, a Tiff reimbursement, that is an amount from our tax increment financing increment, or funds from the increment. This amounts to $172,754.98. And unless anyone has a question, concern regarding this report, I am finished. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to the public safety committee report. Trustee Semple.
Guys, anything tonight?
Yes. No, sorry. We had the poor plunge over the weekend, and I'm happy to announce that the Frozen Group won the golden plunger for the Fox Lake event, coming in first, and also raising the most money for this phase, this leg of Special Olympics fundraising. So that was good. We had, uh, street scenes ended a week ago with no major issues to report. And we have a couple academies that are starting, uh, one, March 11th, which is our Citizen Academy, and the Latino Academy starts just after that. And that's all I have. Thanks.
That's it, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next up, community and economic development committee trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, first, I went to announce that we have two new businesses in town. Harrian Roofing at 308 Washington Boulevard. It's a family roofing business specializing in cedar shakes, tiles, asphalt shingles, sightings, gutters, custom work for residential and commercial roofing, and Zack Packaging LLC at the Anatole Building, 165 North Archer, which, um, does engineering for manufacturing and packaging machines. Then I have a few items that are on the agenda tonight. First is regarding our official zoning map for the Village of Mundaline. Again, this is, uh, an ordinance that we have to do to approve our zoning map, so I'll make a motion to pass an ordinance granting approval of the official zoning map for the Village of Mundaline.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, thank you. Next up is an amendment to certain sections of our municipal code regarding parking space dimensions, impervious surface coverage, open fencing, community centers, and recycling facilities. So, as we've redone our, our ordinance, and staff works with it, they continue to find, um, verbiage that needs to be refined for ease of use, for speed, to make it easier for businesses and residents. So that's why we find ourselves. So the first part of this is a motion, I'll make the motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission minutes and findings of fact.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Motion carries?
Okay, next is, I'll make a motion to accept the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendations.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Sullivan. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay. So I think I'll make this motion, and then we do have some discussions. So, um, a motion to authorize staff to draft an ordinance granting text amendments to the zoning ordinance with respect to all changes outlined within this staff report.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion.
Yes, so, um, in regards to the recycling facilities in this text amendment, there is dialogue about the difference between a major text, a major recycler, and a minor recycler, and, um, it has what I consider to be some conflicting, slightly conflicting text, that allows for, um, uh, multi-tenant, for it to be in a multi-tenant building, but also requires, um, five acres of land. And so, I asked staff, and they said that I was the only one that had questioned this verbiage, and I'm just wondering if anyone on the board has a desire to look at that verbiage, to lower the amount of acreage, to, to understand that it's possible that it'll have to come up for variance. If they do go into a multi-use building, they probably won't have five acres for a minor use.
Can I, can I add a little bit of clarification to that? The five acres is a U standard as it relates to a major recycling?
Okay.
Not a minor. So if I look at, I'm looking at page ninety of the packet, and the U standard goes towards the major, a major recycling facility, and does not apply to a minor.
Okay, so then the multi-use that we spoke of earlier is for a major?
Yeah, I actually looked into the document a little bit further after we hung up, and I recognize that the U standard is specifically towards a major recycling facility.
Okay. Meaning, okay, so the five acres is for a major recycle facility, and I'm trying to struggle to find where I underlined, um...
The U standards for a minor recycling facility start on page ninety-three.
You know, the heading on ninety is major.
Okay, so the multi-tenant location is for the minor.
Correct.
And a major has to have?
Five acre minimum.
Okay, so, again, none of these text amendments have had any other comment. Is there any comment that any trustee wishes to make?
No. The, uh, the variance process is one that is acceptable, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay.
All right.
Okay, well then, we're good.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, and what seems a bit redundant, but again, because we're using it more, we're seeing that things can be refined. We also have another motion to authorize the village administrator's signature on another application for the Planning and Zoning Commission and Village Board to consider certain text amendments to the zoning ordinance.
Motion by Voss?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, um, and I believe that is all for community development tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Next up, communication and marketing committee trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of updates, um, that on our website, uh, the marketing department is working on a couple of videos. I saw that the open house video was posted to Google Plus, uh, which means that it's live. Mr. Lovato, do you know if the business profiles video for Cardinal Square is also online?
Yes, it is online.
Thank you. I saw that the joint committee of a whole PowerPoint and the recap article has been posted and also sent in the e-newsletter. That was well received on social media. The quarterly newsletter is going to be distributed on the week of March 23rd, so that's going to everyone's mailboxes. There's been a change in format from the e-newsletter articles. You'll notice that it's more of a Cliffs Notes version with a click here, which will take you to the website for the expanded version. The Village of Mundaline logo is now registered with the U.S. Copyright Office, so that's pretty exciting. And, uh, there's an, a, a direct mail brochure going out to educate our residents on the fats, oils, and grease, and not pouring them down the drain. That's for public works. Thank you.
That's it, okay. Trustee Abernathy, are you ready? I honestly haven't seen this long ever, ever a report coming up.
Okay, you all of you can fall asleep if you want.
Transportation and Infrastructure Committee.
All right, here we go. The never-ending report. Thank you, Director Boucher. Okay, number one, Archer Avenue Construction Engineering. However, it is all good things. So, motion to approve change order number one to the Weston Solutions Archer Avenue Construction Engineering Contract, increasing the contract value in the amount of $13,917.01, and authorize the village engineer's signature on change order number one.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Kim? Yes.
Motion carries?
A motion to approve and issue a purchase order in the amount of $13,917.01 to Weston Solutions Incorporated for the Archer Avenue Construction Engineering Contract.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple. Discussion. Yes, trustee Sullivan.
The next motion is to pay a amount larger than $13,917. Is there a, what has made up the difference between this, uh, this current motion on the war compared to the amount in the following motion? Is there, did I miss something on the?
There was still an original amount remaining from the original appeal for Weston on the engineering services for that project.
So, that's correct, this one's, but, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And a motion to pay, make payment for final pay request to Weston Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $16,512.50 for the Archer Avenue Construction Engineering Contract.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Motion carries?
Okay, number two. Fiscal year ending 2015 Street Improvement Project Construction Engineering Service Agreement. We have a motion to approve change order number one to the G. Walt Hamilton Associates Incorporated, FYE 2015 Street Improvement Construction Engineering Contract, increasing the contract value in the amount of $17,398, and authorize the village engineer's signature on change order number one.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And B, a motion to approve and issue a purchase order in the amount of $17,398 to G. Walt Hamilton Associates Incorporated for the FYE 215, 2015 Street Improvement Construction Engineering Contract.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Okay, now we're moving on to supplemental funding for repairs to additional village streets and the entrance to Public Works One. A motion to approve change order number one to G. Walt Hamilton Associates Incorporated, FYE 2015 Street Improvement Construction Engineering Contract for supplemental paving assistance, increasing the contract value in the amount of $25,000, and authorize the village engineer's signature on change order number one.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And a motion to approve and issue a purchase order and payment in the amount of $25,000 to G. Walt Hamilton Associates Incorporated for the FYE 2015 Street Improvement Construction Engineering Contract for supplemental paving assistance.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Semple. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Semple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Moving on to number four. DCEO, MPRD, Keith Myoney, that's Community Park, Traffic Signal Construction Contract Award. So A, my motion is to accept all submitted bids.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Semple. Discussion?
Question.
Yes.
Mr. Boucher, there's gonna be a sign presumably, uh, uh, there's gonna be where the stoplight is. Is there gonna be a sign saying that this is, you know, the intersection for the park? Or is the stoplight gonna have the same decorative black look that the county has put along Midlothian Road? Are we gonna continue that continuity?
Yes, it'll be the decorative black. I don't know about the sign. I'll have to get back to you on that. I don't believe we have any signage as part of that signal, because it's not a public right of way.
because it's not a public right-of-way. It's just the entrance to the park district.
But it's gonna be the nice looking?
But it'll be the black, fluted decorative.
And that's similar to what we'll be doing on Holly Street.
Yes.
Fantastic, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, trustee Sullivan.
This project was estimated to be considerably?
Considerably more costly than what this bid has come back. The resolution here, the intergovernmental agreement says three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. Is there an addition that we're going to incur in the way of expense more than the bid?
Yes, the design and construction engineering is also part of that grant request.
It's been done already?
Yes, which we have a?
The design has been done?
And the, well, the design and construction contract was awarded to HLR, and it was for approximately seventy thousand dollars. So, we'll still be well under the?
We'll be under the three?
Grant, yes.
The grant was for three fifty?
Yes.
All right. And the park district has agreed to pay twenty-eight thousand, no more than?
If necessary, correct.
And so, we will then pay the total minus twenty-eight thousand will be our responsibility, which we'll use the grant for?
Yes.
And then what happens to the remainder of the grant?
That's a good question. If we don't use it, I'm assuming we will just have it expire because we will be right around the grant amount of, I think, all told, it will be just under four thousand dollars remaining in the grant, assuming that we don't have any cost overruns with the project.
And we've taken care of connecting the sidewalk on the west side of, I mean, everything's in this grant from Home Electric?
Yes.
I mean, from this bid from Home Electric?
Part of the reason you see lower bids here than we originally assumed was because we were able to negotiate with the county when they did their Midlothian Road project to do all of that concrete work at their cost as part of that project. So, we're able to kinda leverage their work against them to give us a more economically efficient light project.
Okay. I can't think of any other improvement that we need there. Hate to send it back, any of it.
We could look at maybe some of that signage on the traffic signal. I think that that's something worth looking at.
Thank you very much. Okay. Anyone else? All right, clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. Motion carries.
Okay, and a motion to award a contract to Hometown Electric Incorporated of Lake Villa, Illinois for the IDCEO MPRD Keith Maione Community Park Traffic Signal Park Project.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple. Discussion. Clerk, please, oh, go ahead.
Me. We've heard about this light for a long time, and so, just for our residents' benefit, when do we actually expect construction to start? Because we've talked about it quite a few years, and so, I want to put a timetable for their expectations.
Okay. Well, let's make sure it's right in front of Community Center.
I know where it is.
Okay, well, for the benefit of the public, we're talking about right at the Community Center, right where you exit and enter, right there on Midlothian, right in front there. So, what are we looking like for a time?
There is a considerable lead time on the actual polls and signal. It's about two months, if I remember correctly. So, if we award tonight and we start working with the contractor as soon as this week?
Well, I'm just looking, are we talking this year, this summer construction season, or next year?
Definitely this construction season.
Okay, and I don't want to pinpoint any more than that because there are, you know, lots of issues that go into that. But I just wanted to, we've talked about it every year, and it's never happened. So, it will be this construction season.
It will be this construction season. We're working with the park district to make sure we don't conflict with any of their busier times while we're out there with that construction process. So, we may have to, depending on the timing of the order, maybe delay it until later in the fall, or start sooner than the fall, depending. We just, we want to make sure we're not in the way of the park district.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Aren't we ready to take the roll? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes. Motion carries.
I have a motion to authorize the mayor and the village clerk to execute a contract with Hometown Electric Incorporated in the amount of two hundred seventy-six thousand six hundred forty-five dollars and seventy cents, subject to the receipt of required bonding and insurance.
Second.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Simple. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next. CMAQ TAP Grant Application, Midlothian Road Multi-Use Path Phase One Engineering. All right, a motion to approve a preliminary engineering services agreement with Chastain and Associates LLC in the amount of twenty-six thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars for Phase One Engineering Services related to the two thousand and fifteen CMAC TAP at Midlothian Road Multi-Use Path Project, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Really? Okay. Trustee Sullivan. You understand how I think about multi-use paths. This is a bicycle path, and it's not on the road where I think bicycle paths should be. I cast my no votes before, but now that the majority of the board has requested that this go forward, I certainly will support their intent. And my yes votes on the rest of these bicycle paths, as well as sidewalk improvements, and although there's no sidewalk, there should be, but my yes votes do not mean I've changed my mind. I'm just concur with the board's intent to go forward with these projects. Thank you. Very good. Anyone else? Justy Voss?
I'm just clarifying that we're looking at both the east and west side of Midlothian?
Right now, we were exploring just the east side.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yeah.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Now, we have a motion to approve a purchase order in the amount of twenty-six thousand seven hundred fifteen dollars for Chastain and Associates LLC for Phase One Engineering Services related to the two thousand and fifteen CMAC TAP Midlothian Road Multi-Use Path Project.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Voss. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, number six, temporary construction easement, ATG Trust Number sixty-nine seventy-eight. I have a motion to adopt a resolution approving a temporary construction easement agreement for Illinois Routes one seventy-six, sixty-eighty-three, and Shank Avenue roadway facilities between the Village of Mundeline and ATG Trust Number sixty-nine seventy-eight, and authorize the mayor's and clerk's signatures on the agreement.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next, request for authorization to advertise for construction bids for fiscal year sixteen Street Project Part One. A motion to authorize the Department of Public Works and Engineering to solicit bids for the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen Street Improvement Project Part One.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Kim. Just want to point out that this, if I'm reading this right, I think I read it right, this is gonna take care of the rest of the concrete streets in Cambridge Country? That'll polish it off over there.
In Cambridge Country, yes.
That's awesome. That's great news, okay? And they're, they're gonna use the present streets as base. They're not gonna tear them out.
No, we cannot afford to tear out that concrete.
Let them learn. Okay, thank you. Very good. Yes, trustee Voss?
But just to clarify, there are no streets from Locklomond on this.
No, no.
What happened to our?
I did, I think we did address this. There's that, there's a, do you want to go into the poet's neighborhood? I think that's where it is, the urgency that popped up.
This is, right now, what you see in front of you is the Part One of the roll program for this upcoming season, which is just the resourcing and rehabilitation portions of the project. The full reconstruction component, which is Part Two, is within the Clearbrook, Winthrop, and Walnut area, those three roads, and we'll be doing some major water and sewer repairs which are needed. And along with that, leveraging CDBG, community funds, towards those project, towards that project. But we are not in Locklomond this year, that is correct.
So, I thought that we had decided that because Locklomond had been ignored for so long, that we needed to do a little bit in there every year. So, what happened? We did a year, we're gonna miss a couple, and?
Unfortunately, there is no such thing as a little bit in Locklomond. You have to really commit to a substantial amount of funding, and in order to make sure we are able to kinda spread out our resources across the entire village, and make sure we're addressing all of the other needs in village so that we don't have situations like that come up again, we are trying to look at the entire village more holistically and address each of them as they come. Locklomond, which we have been in there for the last two years, will be, again, readdressed in the next year and the following year after that. So, for the next, for out of the five years, we will have been in Locklomond doing full-depth reconstruction and handling a substantial portion of that.
All right, so we are still committed to it. We just need to do something else this?
Did not fall off our radar at all. I mean, that is certainly an area we are going to continue to address for a very long time to come.
Okay, just checking. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, trustee Sullivan. Well, in Locklomond, as, remember, it's just not streets. It's sewer pipes, water pipes, stormwater, drainage, infrastructure that needs to be done before we can put a new street down on top of those facilities. And so, Locklomond is extremely expensive compared to a resurface, which is what we've really outlined here.
Right.
Yeah, to be certain, I mean, I've started getting emails about Locklomond, the fact that we won't be there this next, this next cycle. And I have had extensive discussions regarding this project that kinda came online, and because we just don't have the money, we, in many ways, are ruled by tyranny of the urgent. When something gets urgent and comes online, and that's what the case is with this, you know, the southern project here, you know, we just don't have the three, four million a year to address everything we need to at any one time. So, we have to make the tough choices, but I'm assured that, like you just heard, Locklomond will be back definitely on the front burner the following year, so.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, still going. Number eight, a motion to approve a preliminary engineering services agreement with HR Green Incorporated in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents for Phase One Engineering Services related to the two thousand and fifteen CMAC TAP Maple Avenue, Illinois Route one seventy-six Multi-Use Path Project, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Yes, trustee Voss?
So, this is a state route, and we're looking at putting an off-road multi-use path and on-road multi-use path, off-road? Okay.
Off-road.
But there isn't a lot of space there?
Yeah.
Right? We're gonna be into right-of-way, main one seventy-six, not so wide.
We've looked at conceptually this plan. There's plenty of right-of-way to be able to fit that in. Part of the work in addressing this also would be to kinda clean up the aesthetics of Route one seventy-six, too. So, there's probably more right-of-way than it appears because of some of the heavy vegetation along the edges, but also the power lines that make it look a little less aesthetically pleasing as well. We're looking at addressing that as part of this project, should the CMAC funding come through.
Okay, so, we don't, we know that the state doesn't have money to widen one seventy-six. We're not gonna be doing this, and they're gonna suddenly, I don't know, money fell from heaven and we're gonna widen one seventy-six.
As far as we've ever had in our experience with the state, there is never any sudden change in their thought on their program. And all we can do is trust what they've told us in the past, which is Route one seventy-six is nowhere near their radar on their five-year plan. So, that only tells me that it's not even a real possibility.
All right, thank you.
We applied for this, what, last year or the two years ago? One of the two. This is our second time applying.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. And just as I did then, I will do now, and disclose to the board that my house backs up to this proposed multi-use path. And so, should it come down to a tiebreaker, I will abstain. So, anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries.
A motion to approve a purchase order in the amount of forty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars and fifty-two cents for HR Green Incorporated for Phase One Engineering Services related to the two thousand and fifteen CMAC TAP Maple Avenue Route one, Illinois one seventy-six Multi-Use Path Project.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are now on to Safe Routes to School Local Agency Construction Engineering Agreement for Federal Participation. We have a motion to approve the construction engineering services agreement for federal participation with HR Green Incorporated for construction engineering of the Illinois Safe Routes to School improvements in an amount not to exceed twenty-four thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and sixty-four cents, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Kim. Discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number ten, Safe Routes to School Local Agency Agreement for Federal Participation Safe Routes to School Local Agency Agreement for Federal Participation for Construction. We have a motion to adopt a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Illinois and the Village of Mundeline appropriating funds for the Safe Routes to School Project.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the role.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Motion carries?
You will be happy to know, this is my last motion, to approve the Local Agency Agreement for Federal Participation with the Illinois Department of Transportation for the Illinois Safe Routes to School Program and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement.
Motion by Abernathy?
Second.
Second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the role.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries?
And I, just in concluding, I can't imagine Director Boucher has anything more to add on streets and infrastructure.
No, it's, uh, I almost fell asleep and I like this stuff, so. No, nothing more.
I think we've covered it all.
Very good, thank you very much.
Thank you.
That takes us to other reports. This regards an agreement for water to the University of St. Mary of the Lake. I need a motion to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of an agreement for water service to the University of St. Mary of the Lake.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Sullivan, second by Simple, discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Trustee Sullivan.
As I understand the resolution, we are forgiving the seminary our fee for hooking up to the water and as well as our, our capital contributions to the, for water infrastructure. We're not charging them any fees, no, no hook-up. And the only thing we're charging them is for the actual use of the water?
That's right.
And...
Right, and the meter itself.
Okay, so, charge them for the meter.
Right. They are already connected?
Right.
To the system?
Okay, alright. Now, we accept their wastewater. So, how are they, now, now we have their wastewater. Are we metering, how are they paying for that now?
That is under a separate agreement with the seminary, and we only accept a portion of their wastewater. And it was agreed to many years ago at a, a set volume.
Right.
And they're being billed for that.
So now, they will receive a water bill, same unit charge as every Mundeline resident?
Correct.
And they will pay the same unit charge for the Lake Michigan water portion?
Yes.
And they will pay our wastewater treatment, our charge?
As they currently do. They will pay the existing set volume per cycle.
And we measure that volume?
I don't believe so, I don't, we don't have a meter on it, that's why it was an agreed-to amount.
But now we meter the water, why don't, why aren't we charging them for every unit of water, a unit of, of, the sewer increment of our, of our bill?
Because they do treat a good portion of their own wastewater, so there has to be...
They have a treatment.
Yes. So it wouldn't be as consistent as it would be with a typical user where water in equals water out.
Alright, thank you. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Clerk, please call the role.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries? That takes us to item ten, the omnibus vote items. We have items one through ten. Does any trustee wish to poll any of these items from the omnibus vote list?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Trustee Meyer?
Item nine.
Item nine, okay, anyone else? Yes, Trustee. Trustee Voss, item one. Okay, anyone else?
Mr. Mayor, since we have Lynn here, she can go over seven and eight real quick. Hate to have her abstained all evening to not talk.
Okay. Seven and eight, Trustee Simple, anyone else? Okay, so let me make sure I get this right, so seven, eight, nine. So we're gonna have items two through six, as well as ten, voted on in an omnibus vote, and then we'll go in order on the rest. Am I counting accurate? Okay, very good. Alright, so I need a motion to pass items two through six and item ten on the omnibus vote list.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Voss, second by Kim, discussion. Clerk, please call the role.
Voss?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Motion carries? That takes us to item one, Trustee Voss.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item one is in regards to the utility boxes in downtown. It is, um, establishing members of a committee for utility box art. And I'm just wondering if perhaps this box art would come back to the board for approval before it gets painted, that if these committee members can, you know, make choices and then submit them to the board.
Well, you...
It seems like...
Were you, I'm trying to remember, I don't know, were you present when Mr. Norton gave his report? She wasn't here, okay. Well...
What does that mean? So I wasn't here?
We covered, yeah.
Okay, sorry.
We had, right, we had this before the board. There was a report given, we had a discussion. Although, your request, specifically that angle, did not come up in that discussion. So, I hadn't really thought about that.
No, but I can understand that, Mr. Mayor, seeing as though we have a police statue fund, and that statue had to be approved by us before funds were collected. So...
Well, there was clear precedent set when we wrote, when we had the trial run of three utility boxes, where we entrusted the committee to choose the artist, and the committee approved the artwork.
You know...
And then they went ahead and did it. And so, that was the precedent set. And the issue on the table then, and then this is coming, it was unanimously passed, therefore, that's why it's on omnibus, is that they would expand their project to a greater number of boxes using the same format they did.
So, apparently...
That's why we're here in that regard.
I missed something the first time around because I wasn't understanding the first time around that they would choose the art and never submit it to the board. I, I really was surprised when they went ahead and painted the boxes without any indication from the board. And so, as I've heard comments around town about maybe the choices that were made not always being representative of the community, I thought that perhaps this time around, it might be a good idea if they made their recommendations, just bring them and make a presentation to the board, very much like other committees do when things go on about, you know, that maybe they could just make a presentation before they start painting.
Well, yes.
I, I think the, the proposed ordinance was drafted by Mr. Flynn. I did review it, and section two, it, it, in item D, it states up to seven utility boxes shall be approved by the village board for painting in 2015 and subsequent years. And then E, subsection E says the village board shall approve specific utility boxes for painting by March first each year. So I, I do think the ordinance reflects that by March first, which is going to come and go before the next meeting, unfortunately. And maybe this should be, you know, changed to April first, but...
Okay.
That, that the committee will come back with up to seven boxes for painting. And you could add in there, and the specifics as to the design.
Okay. So, and we could change this maybe to May first, 'cause realistically...
Or May first.
Well, this just identifies the location of the boxes, not the design of the boxes.
Right, that would have to be added.
That would have to be added.
We didn't approve the design last time, and I don't think we need to have that much oversight this time. And I've heard nothing but positive comments about it.
Right, we would approve the locations of the boxes that the committee would have, have our art put on them. So it's up to you guys, that's up to the board. If you guys want to add the design element, then let's hear it. Otherwise, I mean, we, we, we covered this before, and, and so...
I apologize for my absence. And not knowing that it was covered. I, I think that it wouldn't be a bad thing for them to just run it past us. Certainly, I don't think that that's too much oversight or too invasive when it, we're talking about some permanent art, that representing such a large community.
If I could just...
Yes, Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was something that had been discussed the first time, and I believe we were given, the committee was given the ability to choose the art based on the fact that the application had strict guidelines that said no brands, nothing commercial, and, you know, it had to be something that tied to the town. And there is a committee, including Joe DeVito from Public Works, and like with the committee members in mind, and you do get to choose, you know, the committee members and renew them, that they would be entrusted with that charge and with that application and those things in mind, that that would be how the artwork is chosen. One of the concerns was that if, you know, it was not only brought to the committee but also to the board, was that, you know, the requests for artists to change things may deter, like detract from the artist's art. If you, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I just think that art, you know, we all know that we have different versions of what is art. And, and it's such a diverse community that perhaps a larger number of eyes should just look, and I'm not suggesting that we tell artists that they have to change anything, but just that it be given, that it just be submitted.
You say that now, but I hardly trust myself when it comes to art and judging art.
Well, I hardly trust you either, but...
I know, I know, see? So, I'm a little nervous when we say we're gonna have all this goodwill and just giving it a glance. I, I, I think it's going down a rabbit hole we don't want to go down, so, Trustee Sullivan.
It's been said, and, and you've heard it time and time. You know, art appreciation is in the eyes of the beholder. And I'm not concerned about something that I view or someone tells me looks obnoxious. But I am concerned about something that might be offensive. But the people on the committee are going to screen that, I mean, that's not gonna happen. I'm confident of that, and I don't, I agree with Robin. I don't think we need any more time taken up here to determine what we want and what we don't want. But I'm sure some of the things I won't really like, you know?
Trustee Simple?
That's the way it is. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just, my wife and I just painted our house on the inside a little bit, and we couldn't even agree on shades of beige. So I don't want anything to do with saying what is pretty art or what's not. I'm happy to let the committee do their thing, thank you.
Alright, so can we at least agree to change the date so that we won't pass this and already be in violation? Because we're not gonna give them boxes by March first?
I thought they already identified them in the last meeting.
They identified which ones.
Okay.
That's part of this.
They were, in the presentation, they laid out up to seven, they showed where the seven locations were. There was some pushback that maybe we didn't need to go up to seven, but it was left at, up to seven. All those were identified on a map where they were. So I mean, we're just rubber stamping it at this point. And, you know, if it's really, really awful, paint is cheap. It's easy to paint over if there are lots of objections. But I, I think that the discretion of the art committee does very well at what they do, and I would trust them to it.
Alright, well, since I obviously missed in my meeting considerable information about this, I'm going to not vote on this because I obviously don't have the information that you all have that makes you feel way more comfortable about it than me. So if somebody else wants to make that motion...
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion for number one. Motion to pass number one. Motion by Meyer, second by Simple, discussion. Clerk, please call the role.
Meyer?
Yes.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy? Kim?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Abstained.
Motion carries? That takes us to Trustee Simple, items seven and eight.
Yes, I believe H.R. Director Lynn Mally is here, and I had some questions during the week about what exactly are we doing here? And since she's been with, sitting with us patiently all night, I figured she'd have us summarize what we're doing on these two, and then we'll get them passed.
Certainly, thank you, Trustee Simple. If you may recall, when we first, when we finished the last police contract, we made some modifications to the sick-time payout policy in that the sick-time payouts upon retirement would be deposited into a post-employment health savings account. We subsequently passed that same policy for all non-bargained employees, so everybody across the board gets that same benefit. What that does is, the, the monies that the, the employees, retirees get upon retirement can be used. It's set up an account through Nationwide that can be used solely for paying premiums after they work, they've terminated their employment here, they can work elsewhere, but they can use it to pay for their premiums. The advantage is, it's tax-free to the employee, it's also tax-free to the employer. So the village is now not paying taxes, specifically social security tax on those deposits, and the employee is also not paying tax. So it's, it's a win-win situation. Those two policies were passed back in May. We're just now facing our first retirement coming up at the end of this month. So this is the vehicle of Nationwide actually adopting the plans. So that's what that is. You're welcome. Any other questions from any other trustees? That's it?
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to pass number...
I'll second.
Seven, okay. Motion by Simple, second by Abernathy, discussion. Clerk, please call the role.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Motion carries? And number eight.
Salute.
Motion by Simple to pass number eight, second by Abernathy, discussion. Clerk, please call the role.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries? Okay, Trustee Meyer, number nine.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you, this is my annual protest. I, I'm protesting this increase as I do every year because when we negotiated the multifamily agreement with Groot, we did not at that time try to renegotiate the residential rates, which I felt we should have. So, this is where I say my part. Trustee Simple always brings up that I was part of the trustee negotiation team, which is true. And then I bring up that at that time, I also objected to it at that point. So hopefully I saved you a couple steps, Mr.... You do every year! So I'm objecting to this again because we did not renegotiate the residential contract at a time when we had negotiating power to at least attempt it. So I'm not making the motion.
You're not gonna make the motion, okay?
Second.
Motion by Simple, second by Abernathy, discussion.
I have a question.
Yes, Trustee Kim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The point that Trustee Meyer brought up, I, I recall that. This one says multifamily rate increase, so, I mean, just to be clear, this is not the residential.
No, but...
This is the multi, that's right.
But at the time that we started negotiating multifamily rates, we also had an opportunity. We extended our residential contract. And instead of extending that residential contract, we had an opportunity to at least attempt to try to renegotiate those prices because multifamily was added to that contract. And we did not take that opportunity to do that at that time.
I recall, I was in the audience at that time.
I know it well.
Anyone else? Yes, Trustee Sullivan.
As long, as long as we're talking about this. As I recall, the majority of, of multifamily customers of Groot that fell under this single waste taller agreement were going to save money. And I know of some who have saved considerable money. And I think perhaps at least 200% savings. But there are also a very small number, maybe one or two, who were going to be charged more according to the agreement. But Groot agreed to continue to charge them the same amount, except that every year, they would go up 5%. Is that still in effect here? Until they reached the amount according to the contract?
Yeah, and there was never any objection to the multifamily agreement that we reached because it was a very fair agreement, and it took in a lot of those things into consideration. My only objection is that at that time, we did not also try and renegotiate the residential. The multifamily, you know, we worked very hard on that, got a reasonably fair agreement, but we should have gone further in my viewpoint.
Alright, but are there still some that are still going up 5%? They're still haven't, they still haven't reached?
Yes, there, I haven't checked where they're at exactly, but it was going to take several years for them to reach this rate. And I could get that information.
No, 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 that's right, I'm just wondering if it's still applicable.
But that's correct.
And there are still some going up 5% a year. And I will hear from one of those, I'm sure. Okay, thank you. He's forgotten the terms of the contract. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Okay, anyone wish to make the motion to pass number nine?
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Sullivan. Discussion. Oh, we already had a motion, Simple and Abernathy, I'm sorry. Okay, we already had Simple and Abernathy.
That's right.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
Voss?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Motion carries. That takes us to village staff reports. Village administrator, Mr. Libado.
I just have two items tonight, Mr. Mayor. The first item is on the printed agenda, looking for a motion that would authorize the mayor and the village clerk to sign the Mundeline firefighters collective bargaining agreement. That's the first item.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Simple, second by Abernathy. Discussion. Yes, trustee Sullivan.
Your microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Is there, is there not a fair share clause here?
There is not, sir.
There is not?
No.
Okay. And secondly, in regard to Article III, management rights. And our fire chief is here too. I'm gonna leave him out of, out of the mix here. He can, he can help out. It says in the first paragraph, sort of in the center of the page, among management rights, we have the right to determine the places, means, methods, and number of personnel needed to carry out the village's mission. Does that mean that this organization cannot bargain the number of personnel we have?
Well, the, I think what you're referring to is the law that changed last year where.
Yeah, the Manning law, yeah. Does that mean?
That's in arbitration. So we do, it, it is, it is a mandatory subject of bargaining. It's an arbitratable component. Well, the management rights clause will state that, but the state statute will supersede that. I mean, that's a standard management rights clause.
That language, trustee Sullivan, was probably written two years ago.
Oh, before.
Right, long before the bill was introduced. That language has been there since the beginning of the negotiations, probably, or very soon thereafter.
For quite a while. Just, and as a side note to that, there is a piece of legislation, there's a trailer bill active right now in Springfield that clarifies that arbitration processes relates to breakthrough bargaining. So it's not as it's not as daunting as, as one might think in, in the collective bargaining arena as far as what our ability will be to still work on that with staffing.
Well, if it says this in our agreement and we agreed to it and the members agree to it.
I think.
The state statute says they can come in and
Well, well.
and ask for an arbitrator?
No, 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 not ask for an arbitrator.
No, I think from a practical standpoint, this contract terminates on April 30th, 2016. I think between now and then, there will probably not be any disputes over the number of personnel that we have. However, it is, as Chief Sashco indicated, it is something that can be, they have the right to bargain at the table, at least the way it stands now, subject to change by legislators.
Okay, so what this means is they can't file agreements in regard to the number of, of.
No.
Firefighters.
No, it can only be a subject of bargaining at the table.
Alright, so.
It's not grievable against the scope of contract.
On the expiration of this, they can bargain to remove this language?
Attempt.
Yeah, yes.
Attempt, well, yeah, bargain.
Yes, yeah. They will try and negotiate this, that's a possibility.
Number of things we want, this is one of them.
Right.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you. Although, I would say it's been a long time coming and there's lots of, lots of ins and outs and. I just, I, I just think that we've, we're approaching a serious problem in regard to organized labor in the public sector. We, we really fail to have the control we need and we fail to be able to, in, in one of the day, one of these days, we won't be able to afford these labor agreements. We simply, we simply won't be able to. I would, I would just guess, and, and I wanted to take a moment, or take more than that, to go in and, and look at what it has cost us to get to these, how many pages, 35 or so? 40, 40, 60, 60 pages. And I would imagine that this little number here costs the village of Mundeline over $100,000. I hope I'm wrong, but that would be a guess. I think that's crazy. And the clauses here and all the opportunity to be concerned about how the village is honoring the terms of this agreement are just food for more tens of thousands of dollars of, of disputes. I can't, I can't support any of these agreements. I'm sorry, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, did we have a motion on that one?
We did not. Ah, yes, we did.
Okay, Simple and Abernathy. Okay, anyone else, other discussion? Okay, clerk, please take the roll.
Simple?
Yes.
Abernathy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Voss?
No.
Kim?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
It's 42.
Uh huh.
Okay, very good. Motion carries.
I had one last item and it's just a heads up to the board that we are bringing forward the closeout of the village hall project. So we've got a document that we're reviewing right now. And so I expect in the next month or so that we'll bring back the final closeout of the village hall. I think what the board considered tonight on one of the many motions was I had it related to the public improvements of the subdivision. So we're close to bringing you the final closeout of the village hall.
Very good.
That's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next, village attorney.
I have no report and I don't believe there's a need for executive session.
Okay, thank you. Village clerk?
No report.
No report this evening, no executive session, okay, at this point. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion by Abernathy, second by Kim. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign. Thank you, everyone, for attending.